And we have Dick Lewis, the Selectmen's representative here. Beautiful. All right, that brings us to item number three. Are there any public comments at this point? Okay, moving on to item number four, administrative matters. We have an application for a minor subdivision, PID 228-007. Request to subdivide one 11-acre lot from a parent lot, 43.56 acres. Owners are Alfred and Bertha Fawver, Old Hebron Road. Sharon, do you want to bring us up to date on this?
Yeah, I'm just sorry, just for clarification, you haven't appointed Mr. Dragon?
Oh, yes. Mr. Dragon will serve as a regular-
Well, I think we've got four.
We do. We do now.
With or without, listen, I can't even-
That would be-
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So, as the protocol goes, sorry about- The protocol goes, Mr. Dragon is welcome to sit at the table, but you can't vote. You have to look out for him. Participate. No, that's fine. Just wanted to get it clear for the record. Thank you.
So, that brings us to an update on the application for the minor subdivision.
Right. I'm going to do subdivision first. Do we have a representative here? Yeah, I thought, okay, good. Okay. This is a very simple application for a one-lot, a minor subdivision. This would be on Old Hebron Road. The parent lot, so to speak, is parcel ID number 228-007, which has a total of 43.56 acres before subdivision. There is extensive frontage of this parent lot along Old Hebron Road, so there's no issue about a lack of frontage for the proposed lot. The proposed lot is going to be approximately 11 acres with 285 feet of available road frontage on Old Hebron Road. Just FYI, there's also a view shed easement, which is just, you know, not relevant really to our concern here, but it's noted on the plat. And we have Mr. Haas from Forco, who is the agent for Albert and, excuse me, Alfred and Bertha Fawver, who is going to present the application. And the application is complete, so I would recommend that it be accepted and we folks deliberate on it.
Okay. Would the representative like to speak, say anything at this moment? Before we vote to accept it as complete?
No.
Okay.
I move that we accept this application as complete.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Is all those in favor of accepting the application as complete signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, the application is accepted. Now, if the representat- If there's no other questions at this point, the representative can come forward and kind of explain what's going on here.
You all have a map?
Yeah, we do. Thank you.
I'd like to say, I'm Tom Horn with Forco in Rumney. And it is a fairly simple subdivision, 11 acres. Soils on the majority of the lot are well-drained, good for septic. It has adequate road frontage. There is an existing driveway into a- Most of it is old field. Quite a bit of it is actually still open, or at least partially open. And there is an existing driveway leading into it at this point that's used just to get vehicles in for mowing, and it's been used for logging purposes and whatnot in the past.
Are there any questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Kelly?
Just had a few of us coming in. Like, uh, a big block. Catchy face. Before you get to Father's house?
Yes, it's, um-
Down, down, down in that section.
Yes, if, before you get to Fawver's house, on the same side as their house, there's a brown, kind of an equipment shed. It's right across from that.
Oh, it's across from that, so it's on the hill?
It's on the hill.
The mow field up in there?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
If there is no more questions from the board, we will open this up for a public hearing. Public hearing opens at 6:41. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the applicant? Anybody would like to speak against the application? Anything in between? All right. Public hearing closes at 6:42, and we'll bring it back to the board.
I have a question. Is it indicated that there's a roadway that's already existing that they had used for logging? Is that, basically, that is on the easement, they're going to keep that open? I see a roadway on the map here, and I'm just wondering where the view easement is? Because that's where the road is?
No. No, it's actually-
Excuse me, Paul. This is the view easement. This is looking, the view is in this direction. All that means is that-
Right, so he had mentioned that there's an existing road?
There's his right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so the view easement is actually on the land that's being retained?
Yep.
Or, well, I don't know, being retained at the moment, but the, uh, the parent lot. Yeah, the view easement is on the parent lot.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. I'm just curious, what does the view easement cover? Build, or you couldn't put a road in? Couldn't cut a tree?
Um, it's actually for the cutting of vegetation, that there's a potential house site on the 11 acres that's being subdivided. And thinking to the future, for that house site to be able to maintain a view. They're building in, you know, the deed that will go along with that 11-acre lot will contain provisions for the cutting of vegetation within that view easement area.
All right.
So, it's a forethought. They're thinking ahead.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
Did you have a question, John?
No, I just was going to say, we have a view easement from that, and I think it's pretty often inspired what the various issues have to do with this. About the reason to go to the lake, and how then if we were going to cut a tree, it would be out of expense to do it. But there's a large minority to own the problem with Fawver's view.
So, I would entertain a motion from the board. And second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Ranlett, brought forth by Mr. Kelly. Okay, so the, uh, this is to approve the application? Is there's nothing else we need to go over on this staff review? No? Okay. All those in favor of approving the application signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. All right, so that brings us to an application for a boundary line adjustment. PID 228-008 and 222-030. Request to adjust abutting boundary by annexing 12 acres to PID 222-030. If you want to bring us up to date on that?
This application is complete. Essentially, what is happening, as it turns out, these are the same landowners that were in the previous application, but this is a different parcel of land. In vicinity, but a different parcel of land. The parent lot, we'll call it for purposes of identification, is tax map 228-008. And essentially, what these folks are doing is carving out a 12-acre piece, which is going to be annexed, so to speak, to the buyer, which is the Pamela Martin Trust, tax map 222, lot 030. And essentially, in planning terms, shifting that boundary line. For the moment, while this happens, this is a freestanding lot. However, I've spoken to Tom, and he fully realizes that this parcel has to be merged once all the transactions are completed, and, you know, the deed's written, and the Mylar's done, and everything else. This additional 12-acre lot has to be merged with the Martin Trust lot. For a total on the Martin Trust lot of 24.35 acres after the lot line adjustment, and a reduction on the parent lot from 55.83, less the 12, down to 43.83. Once again, you know, we, this lot meets all zoning standards. We're not creating a non-conforming lot, but it's not going to be a freestanding lot. It's going to be essentially merged. It's going to be merged. So, there's just a lot of shifting going around.
So, it sounds like we're creating another lot, that it then will be merged with another law?
Well, not really. You're adjusting, but it's-
Do you have a copy of the plan?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can look at me.
I didn't just come up. It's just entertaining. But it doesn't show the 12 acres. I mean, just the-
Oh, no, that's just, that's kind of a locus. Yeah, I think something happened. Somebody was, I didn't hear this package, because a lot of you guys didn't get this. Um, hang on.
Do you have a second?
This is the 12-acre lot. And this is where they're cutting it out. This is 12.35. This is the other 12 they're cutting out, which will make 20 acres.
Yes. Sorry, I didn't get.
So, maybe we could have the applicant?
Yeah, Mr. Horn is-
Well, let's, um, let's see, do we have a complete application for as a staff?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So, let, we can entertain-
I don't have that.
She has all forgotten mine.
That is there.
We can entertain a motion that the application is complete before we move on?
I move that we accept this application as complete.
Okay. You have a second?
Here, you can use the big names.
Mr. Kelly? All those in favor that the application is complete signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay? Nope? All right, so, now we will ask the applicant to come forward.
And this is a lot line adjustment, so no new lots are being created. It's simply taking, deducting 12 acres from the parent lot and adding it on to the adjacent lot owned by the Pamela Martin Trust. And so, the deed conveying the 12 acres will have a stipulation in it that the 12 acres will be annexed or added to the existing Martin lot.
That makes it easy, good. Are there any questions for Mr. Can't remember.
Horn.
Horn? Are there any questions? Just Mr. Lewis.
The frontage of the 12-acre piece that's being carved off, what's, I'm not sure what that dimension is.
Yes, it's about 200.
Yeah, it's up in the little piece, because it's got some little twists and turns up here.
Yeah. Yeah.
I added it up laboriously.
So, what's the lot frontage in that zone, 200 feet?
Uh, it's in the planner report. It's over. Oh, oh, in that zone?
In that zone.
Uh, it's 150 without, yeah.
Yeah, but in the end, this not being a newly created lot, that 200 feet is just being added on to the Martins' existing frontage. So, we're just increasing their frontage, and the Fawver's are decreasing their existing frontage by 200 feet. So, again, it's not a new separate lot.
I guess I would just make the observation that if their, if the, if the language in this swap is taking place between these two property owners requires that it be merged, that's fine. But, I mean, we can't necessarily require it to be merged. Because the lot has frontage and has lot area.
But it's coming in under the guise of a boundary line adjustment, not a minor subdivision. So, I mean, right, but, but, I mean, we've had this discussion, Tom and I beforehand, just for that reason, to make absolutely clear what, under what guise this is coming in.
Yes, yeah. So, the application is just for a lot line adjustment?
Right.
And not for a subdivision? All right.
I guess I, no.
Well, it's just, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That's why I called him on that right away, to see what the intentions were.
One big lot on stuff.
Well-
One bigger. But I guess if they decided not to merge it, they could do that.
They could, but the planner would be really irritated, because my paper would be all screwed up. So, it's just, no, I, you know, hopefully, that's the case.
Ms. Bishop?
I haven't heard it right. At some point, it's basically going to be merged, and my question is, why, why wouldn't it be done at this point? Why wouldn't it all be merged together this evening instead of doing this? Does it make sense?
Well, because it doesn't exist till you, you got to start with step one, which is either a minor subdivision or-
So, this is common?
So, this is number one step. The second step, the merger, goes before the Board of Selectmen, a voluntary merger. So, you guys don't really see, I think the chairman signs off on the paperwork, but it's essentially the same owner of two parcels saying, "I want to take this line out of the middle." So, we don't bother the board with that unless there's due process.
Although, thinking about it again, to do a merger, you have to have two separate lots that you're merging together. And we're not doing that in this case. So, from a legal standpoint, it would appear that an approval here enables the lot line adjustment to take place, and then the deed conveying the 12 acres to the Martins would be the final step.
Well, I guess, you know, you're right. You're right now that I think, we were just thinking, it's, it's that transitory thing. But that prevents it from becoming a freestanding lot.
Yes. Yeah, well, the fact that you're-
Because it's in limbo.
The fact that you're approving it as just a lot line adjustment and not as a new lot. And then the deed will have a clause in it that says that it's being annexed to and has to become a part of the Martins' existing-
So, we skip that step. And when you bring the Mylar in, I mean, that seals the deal. It's, you know, there's all the-
Yeah, actually, you know, the deed.
Well, the deed, but the Mylar also, the Mylar, I was going to bring this up afterwards, not to belabor it, but the Mylar, you know, I want to see some language that speaks to it all becoming one.
Okay. And do we have that?
I don't have my copy out. The property's language in there that said it could be annexed to. Yeah, right within the 12-acre piece, it does-
Yeah, it does. It says that. Mm-hmm. Yep.
So, is that what you mean?
Yeah. I think, I think in the notice of decision, I'll just make mention of that, just so it's clear in the paper trail, that's all.
Ms.?
No, please.
Mr. Kelly?
Just had a few of us, we're just a little blocked on the back door. Let me just knock it out and ready.
That was actually a prior lot line adjustment a few years ago. That, again, that was previously Fawver's land, and the Martins asked to purchase and add on two acres to their lot. So, this is a second lot line adjustment.
So, so they actually run into like, yes?
Yes.
And that, that is your 12-acre, not including that?
Not including that.
Okay. Any other questions from the board before we open this up to a public hearing? Okay, at 6:55, we open this up for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone opposed that would like to speak? Anyone in a neutral? No? All right. At 6:55, we close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. No second? Do we want to discuss this, or? Mr. Lewis? Hmm? Mr. Lewis?
Do we want to discuss? No, I'm, I'm fine.
Good. All right. Any other discussion? Did we get a second? We haven't got one yet. Okay, a second. Before we vote, is there any, any talk on the motion that's on the table? And I'm, the motion, I'm assuming, Mr. Kelly, is to approve the application with the stipulation?
Well, yeah, it is in there. It's being annexed.
You don't need a stipulation.
No.
Right.
It's just not going to be a freestanding lot in the negative. Just to approve the boundary line.
Do we need a time limit or anything for that to happen? I mean, it could be, go on indefinitely.
Well, your, your approval timeframe is a year from today. So, we need to accomplish deeds and pins.
Does anybody know where this lot is? Any of the Republican people know where this lot is?
I don't believe it.
You know, it's not really well, going through a lot of dramatics, it's hard. It's a lot up on the back road. It's an open field, woods. It's not, you know, it's just, it's up on Hebron Road.
Yeah, I saw it the other day. It's comfortable.
But, you know, sometimes if there's a minimum limit that makes you a question, that this is fine land and probably, I don't know, it isn't, I don't know if you can be going for any of the brain in it.
Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion on the, on the motion that's on the table, we will have a vote. All those in favor of approving the application as stated signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have another accepted or approved application.
And I did bring Mylars with me, if you want. Do you want them now, or I can leave them with you?
Would you mind leaving them with me? I'd just like to, just, you know, tease and eyes, basically.
And I did bring a few rest of paper copies.
That's great.
For our-
I can do that before I go.
Um-
No, okay, I'm sorry.
I'd rather, I'd rather just have a chance to look at it. Might, thank you, though.
That brings us to item number five on the agenda. Do we have correspondence?
No, we do not.
Okay, that brings us to item number six. Do we want to postpone item six and-
Thank you.
Put that at the end of the meeting, at least until after item number eight? And let six and seven go after?
Makes sense.
Okay. So, that's going to bring us right now to item number eight, which is unfinished, another business, a presentation of Mountain View Farms' area drainage report. So, do we have Mike, our town engineer, that's here? And I'm going to let Mr. Ranlett run this portion of the meeting, since he's more familiar with this, and I will move the gamble over to him if anybody gets unruly.
I have the power now, huh? Sharon?
No, I put the points out here. It says I cannot, because I didn't, I didn't want any premature-
Okay. Go ahead, Mike. Yes, go ahead, please.
I guess this is a follow-up from the last, from the Gardens project. Between now, between the last meeting and today, we've done a lot of the work. We did have a, we did learn a few things at the last public meeting about what some of the concerns were. We had a much better idea what those were. We met out in the field with the, with the Sunday Butters, a lot of the Butters, and some of the planning board members, it does mean November. And then I met out again in the field with, with Mr. Blackie to talk about what actually was visible at his site in that particular area where the swell is, to give a better idea of what the history was there. So, what I found, this is the, this is the same basic, I can see they're not built. The same basics that we're doing for, only a little different, I, only thing to add here is that you have a large bit behind it, so we need to do it here over here. So, we talked, the last time we talked, we talked about the group development. And that, before we made the increase, we wanted to see the site. We found that everything within Crescent Street area, draining down to the low point there, and it doesn't drain downstream. So, that's all, we can't find anything coming downstream. And we talked a lot about the hillside drains upon the hillside, what it affects out of that line, on downstream area, and the stream as it was coming from the woodside. We talked a lot about the backside drains, so that groundwater away from Gate Street and down to the side, the water, and everything. But we wondered, there's some problems about, a lot of the, I guess, the connotations of what possibly could have changed from this hillside to the hillside that hurt water. If you look at this large area here, this whole area, it's 58 acres, that's a pretty big area. We looked at the area along the, sort of the upper part of Crescent Street, and that's where that stone swell was. And you can get the back, off, to the left of the pond. Looking for something to get, get, came at some point in the past. And we found that the, that drainage swell, the stone, the stone issue, then doesn't have underground drainage, but that is, is the business, you see the general, especially with the handout. If anybody gets into that, you know, some, small rainfall, with the pipe, and the pipe actually, like, here, where it is, where it is. So, you know, let's get into that source, or real large one, will probably just continue across into this field where it doesn't have that, not really a diversion. The parts, you know, what could have diverged from that, that upper part, there were, at some point in the past, there was an attempt, obviously, because I saw the diversions to a, to a, the Crescent Street road construction, it's maybe a couple of three feet deep, and I have no idea when it was built. It looks like it started for quite a while. That, that makes some effort, because that's what was, from one side to the other. The times, I assume it's always been dry, so I don't think it's having a huge effect on groundwater. So, groundwater appears to continue to be flowing down the hill, okay, that's underground, going across. I think that swell, that little diversion swell was constructed, it would probably divert, and it was, and it was the surface flow would send it in that direction before it even got to Crescent Street. So, so, you know, plus, we're looking at the, what impact that could have on the pond. So, the overall watershed's 58 acres, that's about 10 acres of that, that's maybe, maybe 20 percent or so of the, of that watershed may have been diverted at some point in the past. So, so, I guess our job is to try to find out, you know, well, did that happen? When did it happen? Do we have any evidence that shows when that happened? What I, what I have is, is a statement from Mr. Blackie that said that it's been there since 1980, when he used to live up there. I have, I have information from some of the Butters that say that the flow has increased in the last few years when this, when this was built. I have a plan that shows, shows the existing pipe that was built in this area, and it's a block, and based on design, it can make sense. But it was put there specifically to maintain groundwater flow and maintain flow, so it didn't get diverted the pond. And what I don't have is any information as to when that diversional swell upstream of this Crescent Street construction was installed. And I'd say, if a diversion did occur, it's probably associated with that. I don't really know when that happened, so. So, I know you've all, you all have this memo on, or you can have a chance to read it. And I kind of, that's just sort of quick summary of what I said there, so. So, what that kind of leaves us is, is a, is a, and I don't really have a, if, if an increase of flow did occur, and I'm not sure if it did, I don't have any evidence as to why it occurred, other than maybe, maybe that diversion swell upstream. If it was built in the last five years, we see, developer said it was not, so. And I don't have any, to me, if I knew when that was built, I'd have a lot. But I don't. All I know is, changes, did occur, I can't explain why. Do you have any more flow than you had a few years ago? I would say the things that the developer built, it would, that actually would maintain groundwater flow, has to. When I was out there in December, I saw that pipe flowing about halfway full, so. So, the groundwater was flowing through, it was a big pond, pond of water here. I do understand that this is dry and it needs to be, so. So, at some point, somehow, somewhere, something, this area probably, probably did divert it. And on some level, solely attempted to divert that over there. But what I don't have is a, is a definite, definite time as to when that happened. Or, again, it's difficult to know exactly how much that would have happened to the pond, since when you look at pond water service elevations, it's really two things that contribute. One is groundwater, which can be pretty significant, and the other- One is groundwater, which can be pretty significant, and the other is, is surface water. So, if the surface water did get diverted, and what happened is associated with this construction, probably no effect on it whatsoever. The swell was, was installed before this, or it seemingly probably was, but I don't know what it was. And groundwater being maintained to the same location it is now, so. The fact that that's dry when it is now, or was before, hard to explain, so. So, it's, usually, as an engineer, you like that something, everything be nice, buttoned up, tidy, and you have an answer here, but what you have is, is you have information that talks about an increased flow, and I can't find a reason why that occurred. I have a lot of record information, I've looked through every piece of paper that I could find, every document that was related to this, to show when some of these things occurred. And all I really have is the, the existing survey plans that were done in 2004, in advance of the 2006 subdivision, the subdivision plans and those drainage calculations. Based on that, based on what I've seen out here, I can't really see how that water could have gotten diverted, unless that swell that was built upstream of this diverted the surface flow over there, which at some point did. And how much that contributed to pond, I just really can't say. So, not to be, to be vague, a problem, but to be vague, but that's kind of, those are the facts that I found, and what else do you want to say about it? Do we have to answer your question, Josh?
So, Mike, just to, to put that in another term, that the swell, the orphan swell up on the hillside, that's the orphan, we can't find out, we couldn't find out who did it, or who it belonged to. It's not obviously associated with any phase of anything.
Was never shown any, on any, any construction plans.
It's just there.
Right, it's there, and it's, it was built in 2008, or 1980, I can't really tell. I can tell you, it's been there for years, no doubt about that, it's been there a while, you can see that it's there. But it doesn't, doesn't appear, by looking at it, that you, that there's a lot of flow, there's no evidence of any erosion that, it's not an earth, an earth swell, it's like it's just been there for a bunch of years. You don't see the, you don't see where, a lot of times you can see, you know, a big hillside coming down, you see a robed channel, no evidence of that, so there's a lot of flow coming here, but there's no real evidence of a lot of flow being diverted by that swell. And as far as what's getting down, that other swell on Crescent Street, that was built as part of that 2006 development, I think very little from the surface, probably just the ground. So, the other thing that, that some folks talked about, and I, it used to be here, it grew well all the time, it was growing off. In that bottom, that floor, there's a six-inch, like a stone, that's still, and it's a lot of flow, pretty much continuously, so if that wasn't there, then that groundwater would come closer to the surface, it would make that everywhere west, that actually, the system, what's going on. The, something that, well, we met out in the field, in the, in the hills, that you see, and you know that, that underdrained pipe was there, that if it wasn't there, and water, and groundwater would be diverted upon, that'd be very significant, that'd be, that'd be a big problem. The fact that it is there, if, you know, this diversion, just, if there's one, it's small. And the only area that's in question is really this 10 acres over there, the rest of this, it drains the pond, no matter what happens, it just goes out of the national issue, there's no question, is in the area that, and I think, I think, at some point in the past, it probably did flow into this area, and it was diverted by the, by the uphill diversion, sort of. I just don't, I don't, I can't, I don't know when they, they were constructed.
Does the board have any questions?
I'm just, if, I'm trying to figure out where the house is located in that area. I can't see it through the woods.
The house should be in the north.
North corner, right there.
It seems to me like it would be over.
The farmhouse, you mean?
No, 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 no. Blackie's house is some, it's over in here. When was that house built? So, you're saying, yes.
This area, this area actually does drain through color into the, this area anyway.
Right, that's what you're saying, but I'm just saying excavation to flatten that area could have been. You know what I mean? They were up in this area to level that area off.
This is kind of the high point of the hill, it sort of slopes down that way, it slopes that way, so.
Mm-hmm.
So, that, I think, when that was built, probably, probably, and I didn't see it before it was built, but the terrain didn't really change that much, probably still drained down in that direction, it certainly does now, so.
Right, because when we were there, there was some, I don't know, was it a well? Something up, sitting up there, right where that rock wall was. We were identifying, but there was a platform there, and it looked like it had been, you know, at some point.
Oh, isn't that the trailer pad? We're talking about the same.
Yeah, there was something, but anyways, it was, that was where I was pretty much focused on when we did our walk and stuff like that, and, and by the sounds of where you're pointing at, it just kind of made me think that maybe when that house was built, that they had, you know, at some point cleared and played around in that area, but I don't know, if that's something that.
I mean, that area, when you get up and over, when you get up and over the side, that area is lower over there naturally anyway, it's always lower, the record, the record plan showed the area, when states put the passway, that's where it was, it's much lower than that ever.
Right.
It's relatively small. The area that's concerned is 10 acres. So, and so that, and if that, and the, 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 the , frankly, wouldn't have been there, if it wasn't some attempt to divert the ladder from going into the field to get it somewhere else, so. At some point in the past, somebody diverted water towards the pond, I just don't know when it happened.
But all this, all this property has been in that family, I mean, nobody, they didn't just purchase it, it's always been the whole area.
Any other?
I guess a couple of questions. One, is that swell such a depth width characteristic, you know, design characteristics, that maybe should have been put on the subdivision plan?
No, it could have been, but it's.
It's pretty minor?
Maybe this wide and this deep. It's a foot, it'd be, it'd be very small.
I guess my second?
It doesn't surprise me that it wouldn't have been picked up on the survey.
Okay, okay. I guess my second question is, would the upgrades or the construction of portions of Crescent Street work to divert any water, do you think? I mean, as far as, you know, elevation changes with that roadway?
I don't think so, that's why, that's why we spent, we spent a lot of time thinking and looking about that, 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 that stone swell. If you first looked at it, you looked at the stone swell, and it looks like, well, there's a whole bunch, a bunch of drains to this, and in particular, if that, if the water that ended at swell was diverted down, down Crescent Street toward the pond, that would be, that would definitely increase the flow, no question about it. You know, but the, what, why that doesn't happen is, one, is you have a, it's underdrained, you have basically, you know, 12 inches of sort of class C stone, and you have, that's sitting on a filter fabric, and you have the, you know, typical six-inch underdrain with smaller stone around it. So, anything that gets into that stone, really goes right down to that six inch, might have been, continues down, the lower flows. If you get a really major flow, you might get some overflow that continues downstream. Maybe the lower flows, the continual sort of rainfalls that contribute to a lot of pond elevation would, would be going that way. If they can get past, if the surface water can get past this swell, it's just uphill that, which is that small earth swell that we've been talking about.
Okay, I guess my last question is, a couple of people have talked about the project, and, you know, after getting your review, it almost seems like there's a thought that, you know, maybe that six-inch underdrain is undersized. I mean, I assume that was installed per plan?
Um, per plan, yes.
Okay.
I believe, the plan that was provided by Mr. Blackie.
I mean, and it's not a direct flow, I mean, it's, it's an underdrain, so it's just picking up groundwater at that point, and it's not, it's not carrying a lot of surface flow, they channel through it like a culvert pipe or something.
It's possible that, you know, some, some of the groundwater could not be getting into it, maybe bypassing somewhere in the back, maybe the filter fabric got clogged or something, but there's no way for us to know that. But what I do know is that, when I looked at the pipe, it was in December, and it was flowing pretty, it was quite refloated, and I was half full.
Okay.
So, I know, I know something's getting in there, whether it's 100% of the groundwater or not, I don't know, but it's really decent amount that's getting in there, no question about that.
Thank you.
Dick, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted, the swell, that unknown swell, that is directing water, though, towards the pond? If it did, surface water, I assume.
Yeah, it's a, a little bit of this now. It's basically, just, this is where the, the stone swell is, right here.
Right, okay.
Just up to all that, there's a swell that kind of goes in this direction.
Okay.
There was water from, essentially from this watershed to that watershed.
Right. That would only be surface water, though, if it was like a heavy rain event or something.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's, the fact that it's, you know, the last time I saw it, this swell is completely dry.
Right.
And there was water flowing out of the pipe below, so I know the groundwater's going right underneath that.
Right.
That's underdrained, making its way down the field.
That's doing its job, yeah.
So, any surface water that does get through the corner of that swell, but, like I said before, that's, if there's, if there's a lot of flow getting in there from this ten acres, we have a huge amount of runoff, you see some evidence of some kind of erosion in that thing.
Right.
I just didn't see that one.
Okay, thank you.
John?
I've got quite a few questions. Number one. Everything is so vain that it's unbelievable, and I think the people in that area really deserve a, an answer to this, number one. Number two, I don't believe that that road was at least paved, that goes up around just beyond the back of the house, and under there, I don't believe that. If there was a road there, it was a dirt road. I also cannot understand, and I come to a lot of people, and they say that whole big field has been, has been wet for years and years and years, and now it's not wet. So, there has to be a, a, a reason for that field being dry, and the other, and the other areas being wet. I believe that the, the drainage pipe and required above is kind of a flimsy, has to be 12 inches on any new construction.
Surface drainage, that's true, that's a number.
Right, and so this is a six-inch drain, so it's not, and once it gets some sand in it, now it's a three-inch drain.
So, just, just to clarify, you know, what, what I understand, because construction requires, not limited to that, for surface drainage, you're absolutely right, 12 inches is the minimum size.
Right.
For underdrains, six inches is a very common size, it's, it's, it's used all the time, it's very uncommon, in fact, to see a 12-inch underdrain. So, the underdrain I'm talking about is something that goes, it's underneath the stone, it's, if it was built per the plan, hopefully it was, because there should have been somebody from, some engineer before me watching that being built, I would say, it's basically a 12, six-inch pipe, that has a bunch of holes in it, it's wrapped with three-quarter inch stone, and that's all wrapped with a filter fabric. So, the filter fabric doesn't let the sands get through there, so. And then that's, sitting on top of that is 12 inches of stone that, that makes up the swell that we can see, so. So, that's, that's, that's it, for, for underdrain, that's a very, very standard size, you always see, there's six inches of forage on that, very rarely you see 12 inches, but surface drainage, you're absolutely right, that 12 should be the minimum.
My other theory is that, in my mind, there is a disconnect between the people in the audience, or the people in that area, and the Black, Blackie operation. One says, well, you know, they didn't have any water, if not very much water, in their cells. And now, after a certain instance, which was the Blackie development, they now have a lot of water, a lot of water in their cells. So, something had to happen during that period of time. And I really think that the people that live there should get a definite answer as to why that is happening. I know I would certainly like it, you know, an answer. If, if I had a house, and, and there's six hundred houses that were built above me, and I never had any water in my cellar, and all of a sudden, after those six houses that were built up there, and I only got two feet of water in my cellar, I would assume that those houses would have something to do with it. It just seems like, like anything, I don't think these people that, that live out there should benefit any more than what they were in the first place, originally. I also don't think that they should be penalized for some type of action that has caused this excess water that they are, are concerned about. You know, we can jumble, jumble all night long, and they're really mad, and we, and Blackie, they're really happy to move happily over that, but I don't think that's what we're here for. I think we're here to try to arbitrate between people and have some kind of, of an answer. And I, and I personally, I knew back in 1950, I used to, my friends up there, we used to go hunting, and there was no road up there, there at that particular time, and obviously, the payment that's up there, and the buildup of that road up there to make it reasonable, could have some effect on, on the water there. I just, I just don't, I don't know, we've been here for about five or six times, and so far, we've just been kicking the game down the road, and we've never, really, we've never really gone between the two posts. And I just, I just, I, I, if I were with people, and if in fact, they were having, and they had to rest the fact that they left off of it because of the development, I would not be happy.
I don't think I would either, to be honest with you.
Can I?
You know, but I'm, can I?
Go ahead.
The other thing I'd say in response to that is, is I can't, I can't come back and, and report something that I can't find some evidence of. And I, I understand that there's been some, some, some reports of some increased flow downstream, so, so I went specifically looking for what could have caused that. And I wasn't, I wasn't, I'm not looking to, to find, to not find a reason for it, I'm looking for a reason to, that, that, you know, why could this have occurred? So, and so, but, so, you know, to say that this is inconclusive, in a way, it doesn't, it doesn't resolve, you know, why there's an increase in flow, you know, what the increase in flow is. Hard, hard to know exactly what that is, I mean, weather patterns and everything, it's really difficult to know. But what I, what I, what I can report is, is what I found from the historical documentation, what I found out there, and that's really all I can do. If, if you want to go beyond that and make a judgment call as to what's right or wrong, what should be done, it's not my job as an engineer to do that, quite frankly. I mean, it's, I'm, I'm pretty much obligated to report to you what I find, and what my opinion is based on what I know, and that's what I've done here, so. But I understand, when I was writing this, that I wouldn't be very satisfactory to everybody that, that were looking for, for something that says, here's exactly what caused this, this is exactly what happened, this is, you know, here's the, the finite amount of change that occurred, and here's why it happened. The information isn't there. If it was out of founder, I can assure you of the founder. But I can, I can tell you that what, what I believe caused a change is when the uphill diversion swells were built. And they, and they, that, those were not built as part of this project, as far as I can tell, unless they were done without anybody knowing when this project was built. When, when, when this project was built, based on the approved plans, I don't think that had any effect on what, what's going on downstream. If it did, it'd be very, very minor, very minimal, would be something that would even be noticeable, frankly. You know, what happened uphill with those diversion swells? I, I just, I wish I could tell you, but I don't know when they were built. I don't know when that diversion occurred. But I do know that if someone built some diversion swells, they were trying to get water from that field over to the pond. So, at some point in history, diversion swells were built, and they, and the only, the only possible intent of those diversion swells was to keep water away from either the driver that used to be there, or the field. So, it did happen, it didn't happen as, as a result. I can see it happening as a result of this construction, of Crescent Street, it happened either sometime before, after, during, or something similar to when this occurred, so. So, the, the plans that, for, for this portion of the project, the plans that came before the planning board, that you reacted to it, or whatever was on the planning board at that time, and approved, I think, I think, I don't believe that that caused any of these problems downstream. That's not to say that there wasn't something that didn't occur uphill, though, and the diversion would have made it had some effect on that, but I, I can't tell you when they were built, because, you know, I, I, I know there's a lot of talk about the, the changes that occurred in the last few years, and then, then some, Mr. Blackie tells me the swells were built, they were there in 1980 when he moved up there. So, I, I, that's all I can really report, is what I know. I don't want to speculate on anything.
One, one question is, where are you getting all of this information that you're talking about? You continually say, Mr. Blackie told me this, Mr. Blackie told me this.
Well, no.
You know, if I was a criminal, and if I asked me if I saw something, I would obviously know I didn't.
Which is why, which is why I'm saying I don't want it to be so, because there's no historical, there's no plan, there's no piece of, there's no documentation that I have, that anybody's provided me that could say that this was built, either before or after this development, I don't know. And I know, I know it is.
Who told you all this?
The only thing that, the only thing that Mr. Blackie told me was, he, he provided me a plan that showed me, you know, what the underdrain was installed, and I didn't see it get installed, but, you know, the plan is, is exactly like what I see out there, so it makes sense that it would occur, and it's flowing full of water, so it's probably, I'm sure, I would imagine is there. And then he, and I asked him when the uphill swell was built, and he said it was there in the 80s, when he used to live up there in a trailer. That's what he told me. That's, that's really the only conversation we had. As far as what the changes have occurred, all those came from, from, from these folks, from some of the planning board members out there that had been there for a lot of years. And those are changes that have occurred, from what I, from what I can get, sometime And those are changes that have occurred from what I can get, sometime between the late nineteen nineties and today. And it seems like a lot happened in the last few years, so...
Okay. One thing I'd... Excuse me, Dick. One thing I'd like to have understood, John, we're not kicking a can down the road. We have spent six or seven meetings getting different information together so we can come to a reasonable conclusion. Nobody has said, you know, "This is the end of it." We said back, I think in November, when we first started this, this was going to be a two- or three-month project. Nobody's kicking the can down the road. Nobody's saying, "This is the end of it." We're sitting here discussing, we're getting information that the town engineer has, that he got from the plans that were there, from the plans that were approved, and what is on this site right now. So I just want people to understand, this planning board is not kicking anything down the road. We're working at it. We're trying to come up with the information as best we can. Dick, you had a question?
Do you have any information as to when the cell tower was... I'm just wondering if there's... is there potential for any...
Cumulative.
You've got a long road, water shoots down the road more quickly, just about...
The whole cell tower, really? There's no question about where it's going, and we know it's going to the pond. So, you know, if there's some... up in the woods here, some way up there, somewhere, I guess, a diversion swell, I didn't see that. I do know, you know, the diversion swell at the very bottom is watershed, ready for this sort of...
Can I speak to Mike? Mike, we've talked about this forever, and it's complicated because it's cumulative, for lack of a better word, or exponential, for lack of a better word. You've got a lot of variables. You've got the seasonal runoff, you've got the weather, you've got the different construction of Biko and, you know, Plymouth Woods, and you've got just people putting, you know, impervious surface. You've just got changes. Everything is in flux. Nothing stays static. And I think it's really important at this point, just to reiterate that, I mean, in your professional experience and the engineers that have developed Plymouth Woods, that mitigation issue is here. The problems that Mrs. Nelson and others who are further down the road, literally and figuratively, with the runoff that's come through periodically, I mean, it's all a fruit bowl, but it's a mixed fruit salad, for sure, of stuff. And that's why it's so confusing, because you've got, you know, cumulative effects of... You may do... one may do a little something, a little something, a little something, but we've got all these pieces here that are constantly in motion, and that's why it's so hard to determine what the linear effect was. When drainage is done, as we all know, sometimes it's done... I mean, the math is correct, and it's done to a certain extent of the parameters, but butter and piece, and piece, and piece, and piece, and you're looking at a watershed. You can't pull it out like it's all isolated. So in that long rambling dissertation, I just want folks to know that, you know, this board is taking this very seriously. This is costing me, my budget, your tax dollars, some money, but we're doing it in a very good faith effort to find out what is a reasonable answer to a very confusing and multi-layered and long-term issue here, so... I mean, this... we haven't had much precipitation this winter. There won't be much runoff. Plymouth Woods is in there, they'll get their drainage thing... I mean, this is another opportunity to see how that affects. It's not... it's not simple. No, I know, but because it's a dry winter, at least, you know, at least hopefully we can see some...
There's no doubt that when you develop a watershed, this is... What's been developed in this watershed, wherever this work has ever been around the road, it's relatively limited amount, this street, here's one of the ponds. A whole bunch of houses up there, a whole bunch of ponds and things like that.
No.
And they're built. But whenever a watershed's developed, even if you put mitigation in, there's some cumulative effect involved.
That's correct.
Or changes that occur. There's no question about it. That's why there's more flooding now than there was fifty years ago. No question about it, so... The regulations are there to try to offset that, try to mitigate that as much as we can.
Oh, excuse me. I wanted to ask you, could... did we determine, I've forgotten whether the permanency alteration of terrain or its predecessor at that point in time, it wasn't the most stringent regulations? Do you recall?
It was 2006, I mean, before the new alteration of terrain.
Okay.
The big change in the new regulations is the new regulations require a recharge. They have to take some of the water that's from the new development and recharge it back into the ground, which is what happened on Plymouth Woods and what...
Right, so...
Any new development occurred, back in 2006, the pre-new alteration of terrain regulations, they all looked at was peak rate of not drawing the water.
Right, so...
Water, looking at ponds in particular?
The stringency of the criteria at that time was not as high. Is that fair to say?
It is. It is fair to say.
But...
Even now, even now, the regulations, any regulations they are, they don't require 100% recharge. They require a percentage of the recharge to occur, so... The understanding is that this happens in every watershed, out of the state. There is some increase of water that's going to occur downstream on developments that are approved through the operation of terrain program. For the very large storms, all the small storms should be recharged completely.
So that's what I was somewhat alluding to before, when I was saying... Excuse me. The hydrology counts could prove out, but your threshold was not as high at the time.
I think you might have this, but the two houses built, and these houses drain through dry wells that are right in this area, they don't drain downstream. The shore, part of it, you know, the groundwater in this area, the rest of it drains familiarly. It can't be downstream, so it did. So that bit of pavement occurred with, on the road? In total, this is a total watershed, it's relatively minor anyway, and there's no way this is getting into this pond. There's no way that this, now this is built, and it downstreams it, it's contained eternally there. So the only changes that could have occurred, that were affected, that's why the problem's a little bit of a disappointment right here. You know, you think, okay, well, this is all drained, though, we know that it is, it physically has to, there's no way for it to start to occur. And the only change that could have occurred is whether or not it would pour down into that pond. So if you look at it, so when I look at all these areas on, all those areas, farms and the soil that are actually formed, it drained at the pond, there's no question about that. It drained at the pond, it always drained at the pond. Only area that's questioned is over here. That's why we focus on that so much, on the bone and the neighbors. And it's good, no question about it. And if I was usually drained here, and something cut off, and all went that pond, there would be an absolute maybe difference there, no question about it. You know, how much... Then you get to the point where you look at what contributes to the water service elevation of the pond, how much of that is groundwater contributing, how much of that is surface water? That varies from storm to storm, from year to year, from moment to moment, almost, so it's hard to quantify that and say exactly what it is. But there's no question that with every pond, certainly one like that that doesn't have a definite top outlet until it gets really high, groundwater is a major contributing factor.
So you've got, as I said before, you've got all these factors in play here, it's just really hard to attribute...
It's not that we don't know anything, we do know something.
Oh, right. No, you've delineated a lot.
We know that these drains are in this area, you know, the only area that's really in question that could have been diverted is this one, and we know that, you know, at this point where it's possible that it could have occurred, this under drainage keeping groundwater going where it does. We don't know if that's 100% effective.
And this is precisely what the board tasked Mike with doing, was to please take this huge jungle of everything and sort it out.
The other thing we know that the service water, there's something that urgent soil was built up there, and I'm affected by it, the very service water that it had. So we know those things, but we don't... You know, can I sit here and say, "Well, I can tell you exactly why there's seen an increase in flow in the last few years?" No, I can't. I can tell you what I know, and if some divertment did occur at some point, no doubt in my mind. The reason that those swells are built upstream here is to eat water away from that dry water that we get. It's not a possible reason that it could be there. But I can't tell you that it was built in 2006, and that will currently be the flow in the last few years, but I don't know when they were built, because I have the information from... It's like one thing, one person says something else, and there's no record information to show anything up.
Mike, you had a question?
Yeah, I do, because now that you've pinpointed what you think is a diversion, isn't there a way of telling the size of trees that are growing in that area to give you an idea of what timeframe that those trees started growing? The size of them, and, you know, within a... Well, sometimes... Cut one out. No, I mean, sometimes some people do determine that.
It's not a per-swell, it's in the woods. So in the woods, a lot of times you have the tree cover, you don't have a lot of small growths in the bottom. Same is true here. So you don't really have a lot... there's not a whole lot of small growths. Right at the swell right next to it, it's all kind of big trees that have been there for... what looks like much have been there for fifty years. It's that swell that fifty years, the swell's kind of was in between with the big trees, or...
It's a percentage ratio.
Maybe, but I think it'd be pretty tough to determine at a time, based on the best case, if it was not that one building, just counting, maybe, you know, not sort of your old, you're still a little... I honestly don't know. Rather than guess and speculate on that, I'm not going to do that, because it still wouldn't be... It wouldn't be... it wouldn't be fair to you folks, and it wouldn't be part of what I think I need to do as an engineer, so...
Yeah, just a question. Understand. Dick?
I guess, it seems like we're at a point where the answer to the question is, "We're not sure."
Well, the answer is that a diversion swell was built at some time, that it's been probably put out, diverted to the surface, well away, which that's an issue. But we're not sure how much effect that had on the pond. And if it had, if that was built in the last four years, that had... They're seeing within the last four or five years, it seemed that's coincided with when this was developed.
I guess maybe a hypothetical question, if the chair and the budget and all of our tax dollars was not an issue, what would your recommendation be to do next to try to dig deeper or resolve this in a more complete fashion?
I mean, this... For me, I'm not sure there's a lot more that I can provide for you, now, just to be honest with you. This is kind of where it is. I know what's occurred. I mean, we could... I guess we could try to groundwater monitor or something to see if that thing is occurring, that thing is actually drawing water down, that would be... I don't think that'd be definitive, frankly. I mean, that'd kind of really help a lot. We can wait till the springtime, till the snow is gone, and if there's any more diversion swells up there, that might help. You know, this... It comes to, with hydrology and hydraulics, which is basic drainage, the hydrology part is the rainfall part, the hydraulics is how things flow. When you throw groundwater into the mix and surface water and rainfall, and it doesn't... Those are the variables that Sharon was talking about. There's a lot of variables in each one of these things. And, you know, the design storm that we use is basically, you look at drainage and runoff from rainfall, and ten-year storms, and fifty-year storms, and all of those things. Those are basically synthetic storms that have been created based on all the rainfall events that have occurred, and no rainfall events ever occur exactly like that. So we're designing for something that is about what it should be, and, you know, you know what the rainfall is, and it's an average, but with hydrology in particular, not so much hydraulics, because that's pretty well-determined in surface water, but a lot of variables in that, it's hard to know exactly what occurred. I mean, the only other thing that I thought you could do, if you want to look at what may have occurred over the years, is look at the rainfall that occurred in the last twenty years, to see just how... If we can pinpoint when the pond overflowed and when those problems occurred, and we can pinpoint that those years, there was more rainfall, less rainfall, it was the same, or whatever, that might help. This is probably the only other thing that I thought maybe you could do. I didn't do that, because to me, it's... I thought the fact that there was potentially a diversion up there that did occur, not associated with this project, but associated, you know, on a private property from one to the other at some point. It didn't make sense to do that, so I didn't do it. That's probably the only other thing that I would... You could maybe do the research to try to pinpoint exactly when those occurred, but I haven't really heard from anybody exactly well since in November or in March of 2007, this flooded, and, you know, in April of 2008, this flooded. Because apparently folks don't keep records like that, and they don't know, so... So if I had that rainfall data comparing it to actual flooding events, it would be very difficult or impossible to do, so... So not a lot of more information in my mind that we can really collect to identify this. You kind of have outlined, you know, what the conditions are, what I think may have caused the change, that diversion swell uphill over the road by construction, and what's making the water stay the same, which is the under drain. So if you're beyond that, then it's... I'm not sure I could offer a whole lot more as far as study, I'm not sure that there is a huge next step that we could do to really determine exactly what has changed, because we can't go back in history and recreate that situation.
Mike, I have a question. Based on the 2005 subdivision approval and the construction that has been done since then, were you able to ascertain that everything that is there is compliant with what was approved, or did you look at that?
The first time I got involved in the Mountain View Farms project was around 2006 or 2007, or maybe two, I can't remember, so... So I didn't watch the road get built, so I can't tell you what was there. I didn't, at some point in the past, looked at establishing a bond amount of what has left to be done. So I looked at the road, measured the widths, and it looks like what was on the plans. There's not... one thing, there isn't a lot of drainage on that roadway. There's just nothing there, because it all drains toward the middle there, and it's taken care of in another way. The only real drainage up here is a few dry wells down here, this swell up here, and then the under drain. Other than that, there's just not a lot of drainage, so...
There's a dry well down in that area that wasn't in the field before, right?
There's three of them down in this location.
Yeah.
That weren't there before. And this low area there, eventually, if this all gets built out, they're going to rebuild that into a more well-defined infiltration basin.
What would... are those large enough that they would facilitate that water not being in that field now, or...
I'd say, well, anything down here doesn't really... can't really get over to this location, because anything's too small. And it rained, and it overflowed.
Okay.
It flowed back that way.
Yeah.
So it's just... and I don't believe it overflowed, because you'd certainly know about it from here. So I don't know. I think everything within this Crescent Street circle stays there. Not how much rain you get, it just stays there.
Excuse me, the way I understood John's question is...
Sorry, I haven't answered correctly.
Could the dry wells inside the built-up roadway account for the decreased flooding that we expect?
In the field?
In the field.
In other words, rather than it's set in the field, could that all be in that dry well? But then that would be going... that would be flowing through the...
I doubt it.
Okay.
I'm not sure about that. I doubt it, because if there's less flooding here than there was twenty years ago, this was coming off the hillside there. The dry wells, essentially the dry wells, you have some... There's basically some more pavement here. You have more pavement, you have a couple houses that weren't there before, some driveways and some yards that have more runoff, and the dry wells mitigate that amount. And they're small, they're not... You know, they're four, six-foot diameter dry wells, they're relatively small. To flood that field, you need a lot of water to do that, a lot of water coming, because the soils here are pretty good, they're all... they're infiltrated pretty well. So in order for that to stay wet, a lot of water has to come from somewhere, and I don't think that's enough to make that be wet all the time, or that would have dried it up. Sorry, I haven't answered the question before correctly.
And a question I have, that when that crescent was extended out there, or is that up... yeah, when it was built in there?
Well, it used to come around here somewhere.
Right.
You know, the driveway that went around.
Exactly. But with that road in there, would that have diverted the water from the hill towards the pond? Just the difference in elevation in the road, putting it into an existing...
That's been the focus of everything we've looked at, frankly. Just right on this corner here, where the road was built up. I'd say, if the road was built up, and there was no way to keep groundwater going through, yes, it absolutely would do that, no question in my mind. But if there's an under drain in the bottom of that swell...
That's six inch.
That diverts it? I think it's hard to know how much. You know, probably maybe fifty feet or so, fifty, seventy-five feet uphill, there's a diversion swell that takes the surface water away as well, so... So you've got to believe there's a lot of surface water coming off that hill, it's going to hit that swell first, and it has to basically overflow that swell to get down to the next swell as far as the surface goes, so that swell is really on a bottom controlling mostly groundwater flow, which appears to be doing fairly effectively.
John?
I'm sorry, I made a remark about the can. I'm not talking about the can, I'm talking about the problem. My biggest question is, what are your thoughts in regards to what you call a diversion pump that's up in the woods up there? Might that be part of the problem?
I think it might be, yeah.
How much would it cost for those that are moving there to knock that down?
It's probably a problem.
Yes, it is probably a problem. I would say not much to fix it.
We know the problem, we don't know the solution. And if we can do something that might help out, that didn't cost a lot of money, because this planning board, this engineer's costing money for that, but if it didn't cost a lot of money, at least it would be some type of an action to maybe allow these people to think that we were doing physically something to help a mountain, either Plymouth or Blackie or somebody, and see just what that small mountain work would do, if it would help out.
I'd say it'd be a very small effort for a mini excavator to do that in an hour or two. or two.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It'd be very small.
If that could, you know, sometimes if, if you're doing a bike, is, if you're doing a bike, and you're doing a video, that stops all the water, you know, it could be the same thing, you know, it could be a cumulative thing, but in the time that was built in there, it might have diverted the water down, and about that road there could have flowed down through into the field. But now with the road there, and that being up there too, it might be an additional problem so that it would go down.
If that, if that diversion swell uphill of Crescent Street is diverting water, and we remove that, then the water will go into where that stone is, and it should continue to be. As I said, this swale doesn't, it's not like, it's not like a big drainage swale, where you can see the water flowing through, so I don't know how much effect that will have, but. Good luck.
It'll eliminate.
It could be just a small, small diversion and actually make this-
Yeah, so.
Got a question for you. Hit the gavel, what? I wanted to ask Mr. Vignali, when we did an onsite inspection up there, back in, I think, November or whatever.
Yeah.
I didn't notice drainage basins. Are there some up there, or any, or is that collected water?
On Crescent Street?
Do we have any? I don't know.
On Crescent Street you're talking about?
What's that?
On Crescent Street?
Anywhere, where that development is, do we have drainage up there?
There are three dry wells, I believe, down this area.
What's that, close to Fairgrounds Road?
Close to Fairgrounds Road.
Anything up back is what I'm really concerned about.
No, nothing's that, there's no, there's no drainage, there's an existing pipe over here somewhere that goes through the drains, this little area across the roadway. Then is the biggest drainage component up there, is that, is that stone swale?
Right.
That has, you know, has the, basically has the pipe coming out of it, you can see it. If you go on the other side, going inside where the trees are, you can see that pipe flowing water, with water flowing out of it, that's the underdrain.
Otherwise, there's nothing else up there?
No, there's no underground drainage that I know of, anywhere that I've seen. I don't believe so. Nothing on the plans, there's nothing that, that was-
I didn't know if the placement, if we had several of them up there for whatever reason developing, I don't know all the engineer aspects of it, whether that would, you know, increase the flow of water or create problems.
It's, it's a phased development, so it's not a done deal. I stretch the imagination, whether it goes forward or not, I mean, it was kind of-
Maybe they should have some drainage up and back to divert it, I don't know.
But the road is a done deal?
With a binder coat, yes, it is.
It's about.
Yeah. Now, the road's not changing, but in terms of any accoutrements or, or other needed things, because things have changed, it's still open.
The diversion that you're talking about was, was made, was made when they built the stone swale.
Right.
They put that pipe, well, that's a hundred percent or not, I don't know, but the, but the, the attempt was made to, to put that stone swale and keep the flow going into the middle of this field. But what, the only thing that's, that could be different is the amount of surface water coming down. If that swale was filled, then as suggested, then any surface water that does get down here, and it's hard to tell how much in that swale, doesn't look like a lot of flowing in there to make. I mean, if this did, would get down into the stone swale, should go down into that underdrain and make its way down.
About a hundred percent of the overflow is in that drainage area, where they, where they, which you just explained?
A hundred percent of water overflow?
Well, I mean, it's not diverted anywhere else, it's all in that one area.
The, the areas that are not associated with that one little swell we're talking, it's not really what's actually, you know, a couple hundred feet long, but the area that's, the only area that really could have been, made a change, only area that could have been different from what's going to the pond once this development occurred, as to, as to prior to development, is this, is this area, because this area, you know, this area came down along with, with the, this is the, the road up to South Tower. These areas drain down to what's, to an area that's kind of low back over here, and that could never reach the road, it's kind of a natural swale back there anyway, and that just drains in this direction, always naturally does. This is the only area that's in question, in my mind, is this area at the top here, that's what we talked about when we met up at the field. We talked about this area, and what happened here that could have diverted flow, so, so is the, you know, the fact that there's an underdrain there helps a lot. Does that, does that make a, make a hundred percent of difference? I don't know if it does or not. It should, it makes a big difference, no question about it. And then the diversion swells uphill, I can't tell exactly how much, how much is surface water, how much is groundwater that's contributed to the pond, but there's certainly, certainly an effort was made at some point in the past to take water and divert it from that field over there, that's why the diversion swells are there.
Thank you.
I don't know how effective they are.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to open this meeting for public hearing, and what I would like the participants to do is identify themselves and share what information they have, what questions they might have, and we'll proceed along that basis. We're going to open it for public hearing at seven forty-eight. Donna, go ahead.
Donna Patton, twenty-five Page Street. As I was listening to the engineer speak, I happened to bring pictures of what he was talking about. I can show you the pictures first, then we can pass them around. That would be the rock-
The swale?
Yeah, at the corner of Crescent Street. I believe these would be the diversion swales that you saw cut into the property. Is that what you refer to?
I don't think that either.
Because these have been cut in, and they feed the pond.
No, those are, no, those are not, actually, I'm talking about, those are downhill, which I think was-
This is, this is where the swale's up here, above the stone.
This is right in here.
Okay, well.
That's, that's what Crescent Street is.
This is feeding the pond as well, these pictures here.
Yeah.
That is.
And see, this comes down here and goes by the house.
Well, there's the farmhouse here, the pond is over here, and this is where the water is actually overflowing and feeding the pond.
Yep.
I have a lot of pictures, but these are the ones that show.
Water's flowing down this way, then?
Yeah, it's coming down off the hill.
Right. Yep.
So, I have these pictures.
That's not the diversion swale I was talking about.
Okay.
What I was talking about is a, just uphill, you walk uphill where that stone swale is, is a little swale that was cut into the hillside.
Okay.
That directs water where those, in that direction.
Okay. So, I believe that would probably feed into that.
I think it does, and it all feeds into that.
I think the ground sees this.
Well, I can tell.
Let's see.
It's preventing it all from coming into that field.
Yeah, see, see, this part, this part here was probably here, to take the runoff from the hill into there.
So it started here?
This part, this part, right in here, to the road up.
Folks, we need to, we need to have some clarity on conversations, because it's getting really muddled.
The picture you're looking at?
Yeah. We'll just have, yeah, we'll just have one conversation, go in at a time, please. We'll pass these pictures around for everybody. Donna, did you have any other information you wanted to share?
They were questioning if we had dates about the cell tower. I have two documents from the town of Plymouth Community Plant, one dated September twenty-second, two thousand, Plymouth Stalling Water Adjustment, about the nineteen, a hundred and ninety-foot tall wireless communication tower at ninety Fairgrounds Road. So that gives you an idea on that. And then December second, December seventh, two thousand, site plan review application for the a hundred and sixty-foot tall, monopole-style, multi-tenant wireless communication tower at ninety Fairgrounds Road. So that gives you some kind of idea of when the cell tower went in. And I didn't make copies of these, but you should have them in your files, but just to give you the dates somewhere.
Donna, I can copy yours, I'll borrow them and get them back to you, if that's okay? Thank you.
Could you repeat the dates again? For the page?
Yeah, the, the application for the tower was December seventh, two thousand. The little test was in September prior to that. And you said it was built in two thousand six? We thought we heard two thousand six. Oh, two thousand, okay.
I think the road was built in two thousand.
Around two thousand.
This doesn't show. Okay. Yeah, if you make some copies, happens to them. Does somebody else have any? Okay, go ahead.
Chris Woods, one fifty-seven Fairgrounds, I'm way down to the left off the map there. I'm just wanting clarification on, Mike was referring to the new alteration, alteration of terrain rules and the new requirements for recharge. And I just wanted to know what, if anyone has that, what's the percentage of recharge required for Plymouth Woods? You know, is, is it fifty percent of the runoff there, is it more?
It varies depending on the type of soils you have. Like a very highly, highly permeable soil, like a sand, the percentage is higher. But say a soil that's like-
Probably is the case.
Right, then it's more, so I, I, I've thought in my head, I don't remember. You know, if this, if that project was reviewed by alteration of terrain and by us, it was-
So we should expect that in a typical storm for Plymouth Woods, and of course, this relates to Blackie, because the water's feeding into that pond and ultimately, well, actually, the retention pond for Plymouth Woods is only dealing with water on the Plymouth Woods.
That's correct.
So in a typical storm, the water from Plymouth Woods should be retained in its entirety on the Plymouth Woods?
I think for, it depends how you define typical storm, for, I mean, for a, you know-
You're not talking a hundred years of it?
Yeah, like a ten or twenty-five year design storm, where it rains five inches in a day, probably not. But for, for a, you know, a typical storm, which is a, you know, one inch or less, which is a ninety percent plus or more of a storm, it'll all be retained within those ponds. Should they, they shouldn't overflow? For the, for the relative, for the larger storm, they would just overflow, no question about it.
But we still don't really know, I mean, we don't have a sense for how much this new swale is really going to mitigate things in typical, in a typical storm.
The new swale?
That same kind of storm.
Talking about the, the new swale that-
I mean, the swale that we're there, the, for the pond.
Yeah, I think, I think it's during every storm event, this should never be overtopped.
Right, but then there's going to be a discharge point which comes along the edge of-
Eventually, the, the new swale being built on the edge of Plymouth Woods, and eventually it discharges in the, the lower area downstream, no question about that.
I mean, I guess what, what I, myself, you know, we're just, we don't really have a sense for framing what to expect in a typical storm.
All of this, all of this swale, it's just basically, take, take the flooding that's occurring on Page Street, you can move it over here. As far as what happens at this point, it doesn't change things at all.
Right.
It doesn't change things at all there. Doesn't make it, it shouldn't make any better, it shouldn't make any worse, but it does, it does eliminate the flooding in this area. As far as the diversion goes, it's not there. It's not there.
I, I do want to acknowledge the effort that the town has made, and the board has made, thank you guys for spending a lot of time on this, and that, you know, of course, I feel that, like the same way as everyone else, I'd love to have a more concrete answer, but it's not, I understand, this is, this is a difficult thing.
Well, yeah.
And I, I guess I hope that there's the opportunity for a good faith effort on the point of, on the part of Blackie in the future when development goes forward, to do some things here. I'm not saying they have to do them, but it would be nice that, if it wasn't going to cost a lot of money, that it could help keep things down. And then, of course, there are additional requirements.
In development, it's kind of, you know, first come, first served. If you get yours on the ground first, then the guy who may have gotten his approval before you, you know what I'm saying, in terms of cumulative, so what we looked at in those terms, don't fear that.
And, and the other thing is, we're not finished. This is, we're getting the same information that we're getting-
Right.
Based on, so, I mean, we're not going to finish this tonight, and we're not going to, you know, I think there needs to be some more, you know, sidewalk, I'm going to do some. I know with the construction we have going on, we're, I mean, there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of eyes on it, and Mike's going to take care of it on behalf of the town. And so, so there are some other questions, and, you know, we're going to continue on. We just wanted to, to give you guys an opportunity to hear what's going on, number one, and to give your input, if anybody has any information. Yes?
They could do eighteen Page Street, a couple of speakers appear.
That's all right.
Now, what would happen if you take, build a road going up on top of the hill, you build a tower on top of that hill, and you find the water is coming down too fast, so you take, put stones alongside the wall, that diverts the water going down to the field. Now, once you divert the water to that field, you find it standing there, so you put a ditch in all the way to the pond. What effect would that have?
I'm not sure I understand any questions, sorry.
All right. Well, they built the hill.
Pardon, you said-
They built a hill going up the hill.
Yeah.
Then they put the tower on top.
Mm-hmm.
After that, they took and stoned the side of the hill so the water would run off.
On the edge of Crescent Street, you mean, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right? Now, the water running down off from there keeps the hill from running off and getting washed away, but that water's going down into the field. Now, you take and build a ditch in that field, like that, going to the pond.
You mean, from here to the pond?
From, from the property to the pond.
You mean, from a, inside Crescent Street, or?
Well, in the field, where the Blackie home-
Well, back, in the backyard there.
They, the big building that is used to, for the community meeting place, that field behind that going towards Page Street. Now, if you went over there and you saw, you looked at the property, you see that little bridge with a little cover on it?
Yeah.
Now, that wasn't there before, but after they took and ditched that, then they put that bridge across so they could walk across there.
You're saying that the, the lower area behind these buildings?
Right, that, that they have a lot of a city in that drain, so that, all that water is draining to the pond. So you're talking about the swales and that on top and the runoffs, but looking at that there, that has some effect too.
Oh, it's, no, I can, I looked at the, the survey that was done in two thousand four, and that was already obviously there at that time, so.
Right, but-
So it's, it's harder, to me, there's, there's a pretty, pretty tree back there, so.
Yeah.
That are down the same elevation, this is, and this sort of, definitely lower than the rest.
Well, the Blackie, the old house, the pond itself-
It's right here, right?
That's right there.
Yeah.
Now, Page Street down here?
Page Street.
Here's the pond.
Page Street's right there, yeah.
Right, there's a pond right there. They, you take the water running down here, stays still, you take and, right where, on this side of the pond is where the big hole is, where the water runs through.
Mm-hmm.
If you take and divert that water, it's in that field to that. There's too much water coming down there to, with that opening.
It still goes to the pond, though, right?
It goes to the pond now. Before it was on the field-
You're saying all the water that used to be around the farmhouse?
There was water on the back side, like there, and they ditched it.
Mm-hmm.
Looks like a brook.
Yeah, he's right. When, did anybody know when that happened?
Oh, that's just a few years ago.
Because two thousand four plans should, definitely did not show that. There, the survey plans from two thousand four showed us the lower area we did.
Everything's getting clear now what happened.
Yeah.
So, if that was done, was done prior to the subdivision two.
Well, they told the thing that after the tower, and then that, that's what I think they did to this.
Go ahead.
Greg Patton, twenty-five Page Street. We've got a lot of question asking of different people, their recollections of what went on over the years. We built our house in nineteen ninety-three, and for several years, we did not have water in the basement. It was in the late nineties, the culvert at the end of, there's a, a road that goes at the end of Page Street, and now kind of into this backside of the pond. There was a culvert that was crushed, Mr. Blackie replaced the culvert, and over the next several weeks, I'd say this is probably in the late nineties, you know, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, for almost a week, you could hear an excavator or some type of construction equipment running in the woods. I ran into Mr. Blackie out in public and asked him what he was building, and he told me they were getting sick and tired of having a wet field, and they were putting in ditches to try and divert the water into the pond, so they could have a dry field just in case, quote unquote, they wanted to do anything with the field. And then lo and behold, all of a sudden, we've got this, you have a farm development that's, that comes up. We can't water in our basement that first year, two thousand, two thousand one. Then the cell tower road went in, and there was an increase in water flow. There is a construction company that Mr. Blackie uses regularly, so if you're looking for documentation as to when that work was done, you might want to check with that company. The, the first time we had water in the basement flowing, Rich Gonzalez was the highway superintendent. We had him come down and take a look. He told us his plan was going to be to put an eighteen-inch drainage pipe at the high water level of the pond, run it down the side of Page Street, and into the daylight, into the swale which is there now. That, sometime during that year, we had massive rainfall, we had flooding, uh, I remember Hoyt Hill got washed out, Cummings Hill got washed out. He came back to me and he said, "The money we had to do your project is gone," and was trying to find money to come up with to fix the infrastructure. Um, so, it, it didn't happen. Um, Mr. Blackie came to us several years later before, you know, the, during the approval process for the Roundview Farm, and we again, you know, asked him, "What are you going to do about this water? We keep having water in our basement." And he told us that there was a plan to put an overflow drain pipe, um, his engineer fluid was going to run it down the middle of Page Street, after they had just put in the nice new sewer project and dig all the asphalt up, um, and they were going to dump it into the swale, you know, by my next door neighbor where the water goes now. Um, he said, "It wouldn't happen in one year, two years, but when they got to a certain phase of their construction, they were going to put the swale, the, this drainage swale in, actually a drainage pipe," and he came up with a design that was going to go on the backside of our property, divert the water pretty much like Plymouth Woods is doing. Um, the question keeps coming up about this development here in the field. That has not contributed to the water. When Mr. Blackie sat down in our kitchen showing us all the plans of what he was doing, he told us about the swale, the underground cisterns, that I guess eventually it's going to be five or seven of them in this field. And I asked him if that, if he was going to divert the water from the overflow into those, and he goes, "Oh, no, you know, that, that, that won't handle that type of water flow." Um, every time we've had problem, we've had conversation, he's been involved in it, his son's been involved with it, other neighbors have been involved, water's flowing down Page Street, we're standing in the dark at the end of my driveway talking with Dale Blackie, "What are you going to do to fix the problem?" You know, and, you know, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it. So, um, then the new engineer for Plymouth Woods says that the idea that they came up with really wasn't going to work, so they've got this, this swale idea that they're going to put in, which hopefully it works, we'll see. Um, we have a concern that the, they're going to put a two-foot-high berm at the end of Page Street. When the water flows out of the pond, it doesn't even get to the top of the banking, it kind of backflows out into the field and then down beside of Page Street. I've got pictures, I have a DVD that has video of this happening. You'll be able to see, we're going to make sure that you get a copy of it, and the rest of you will get a copy. You can see the, the velocity of the water that is coming out of that field. Um, it's, it's significant, and my hope is that whoever did the engineering, I was told, the exit for the new swale is going to be the same level as the exit at the end of Page Street. And I just hope that it is down off the end of Page Street where the water flow originally starts flowing out, and not increase the level of the pond by two feet, so that it can start flowing down the other way. Because if that's going to happen, I've already talked to another, you know, Neil MacGyver, said if the increased level of the pond occurs, it's going to increase the hydraulic pressure of the groundwater, and it's going to force more water at a higher velocity into our basement. So, we're concerned that, you know, this fix may not be a fix. We know it's not going to fix Chris or Janet's problem downstream. A question that I've continually asked is, why can't you take the existing pond, put a drainage pipe in? This water is trying to get to the river. Can't we go through and have the pipe drain to the downhill side? You know, Mr. Hanaway has this development down here. This is his development. There's a problem with this pond. Why can't we put a pipe down Page Street or down this side of the field on Mr. Blackie's property and through Mr. Hanaway's property where it ends up in the river? I mean, that's going to solve everybody's problem. It's going to keep the water off Page Street, it's going to keep it out of Plymouth Woods, it's going to keep it out of my basement, it's going to keep it out of everybody else's yard. So, I mean, there's an idea.
Uh, you have, you have the, you're going to supply the town planner with the DVDs and, uh, okay.
Back on April fourteenth, it was Palm Sunday. We had a significant water problem on the street, and they took this video.
Um, do you have, are you having water in your basement now?
Right, now, no. The, the way everything occurs is, once the pond reaches bank full, it starts flowing down the side of Page Street. Two weeks to the day, it starts flowing into my basement. I have a dry well in the basement for drainage, you know, just in case a water pipe or something breaks, and I can monitor the level. It starts coming up in that dry well, and eventually starts coming up through the dry well. So, it's because it's being forced up. If there's a culvert that goes under the driveway of my next door neighbor, when that culvert gets plugged and it backs up into my front yard, then it's two days, and it's in my basement.
Yeah.
As long as we can keep the water flowing downstream, you know, and, you know, Chris and Janet, they never knew where the water came from.
Yeah.
And it wasn't until all of this started coming to a head, when they realized where the water was coming from.
Yeah.
Which was the pond.
Yeah.
And then, of course, in reverse fashion, the water finally stops flowing down the side of Page Street, and then two weeks later, I can turn off the pumps in my basement.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any?
Just, just for clarification.
Go ahead.
Just so you know, the elevation of this overflow swell was set at, supposedly set at exactly the same elevation as that overflow at Page Street, so the pond elevation really shouldn't increase. They can, you're probably talking about was part of the approved subdivision plans, because they never built these, and they just kind of went away and the whole, I guess, if they change the subdivision and built this instead, so, you know, this, this is basically the solution to not doing this. But, you know, what's coming down Page, you know, whether this will work, I mean, if there's, there's no, there's no, it physically has to, it really can't overflow here unless somehow it's a break in that or something. The water really can't flow, there's no way at that height, it has to flow down here. There's a big, a big huge swale that's in those areas, and the water will go this way. So, any water that's flowing down Page Street now, is, uh, that will, that will definitely go away.
But the water usually flows out here.
Right, right.
At the edge of the field.
I bet you've been up there one year, but it's fine. So, you've seen it in two thousand eight, I can't remember what year it was, but I went up there at the request of, I think, the road agent at that time, I think it was Mikey, I think that's the number of, uh, we didn't have a public one, so when I saw where it was going up, at an elevation, they surveyed, had them survey that location.
Very clear now.
Very.
Very clear now.
It's very clear as that. We previously did that, so, well, first of all, we don't want any water flowing down Page Street, we don't want, we don't want this to be lower, because it's lower than more water going downstream and causing problems out there, so we want to make, Mikey thinks in this area, Mikey thinks exactly as they are, so we don't cause more of a problem downstream, but still are able to fix this problem. Can't fix some of them, we can fix that one, so. And the reason this is two feet high, I think so the pond blew up two feet, is two feet high just to, so there's some room between where the water's, its elevation and the, and the top of this thing.
Okay, because I've seen the stakes with the elevation and where the berm is supposed to go, and it's like, uh, okay.
Does it not look high enough, or look too high?
Well, two, if, the water doesn't come out of the pond where the berm is going to be. The water comes out through the field and then down the side of the street, so.
The, the grade here comes up, or on this side comes up a little bit, so it can't go that, too far that way, so the, the berm, I haven't, I haven't seen the stakes myself, but I think this berm is, is to completely close this off, so water can't flow down there, so it hasn't been, not, it's not long enough, it will be long enough to go down there, so that, so that the water cannot flow and dislocate this down here anymore. I didn't even get heard to this. So, no questions that, that that can happen, and that, that will happen as far as it's going.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Twenty-five Page Street. Yesterday, Greg and I received in the mail a letter from Plymouth Woods, loaned a partnership addressed to us. As you well know, construction of the Plymouth Woods Apartments has begun, and the project is progressing very well, with the cooperation of Mother Nature. Completion of the apartments is scheduled for October twenty-twelve. I'm writing to you now to let you know that due to the timing of the construction now underway, the much discussed drainage improvements for the end of Page Street will not be constructed until later in the spring after the drainage swale from the pond has been constructed and stabilized, with the first growth of grass and the swale. With luck and relatively mild winter, we may not see any overflow from the pond this spring. However, if the pond does overflow, the water will flow in its historic pattern until the berm is completed and the pond outflow has been diverted to the new swale. And so, I took pictures this morning, um, where the, where we took the walk and followed the swale. So, I've got a couple of pictures, you know, you really can't see too much because, you know, it's all snowy. But then I went out on Fairgrounds Road and took a picture of the construction as it stands today. That drainage does not exist anymore, because they put in that driveway, and they're doing the construction out there. So, the path that, that water would have exited can't.
No.
Continue that way. And then I also took a picture of the pond, so you can see the depth of the water today, so.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to make mention.
Okay, could you see that the Set Town Planner gets a copy of that letter?
Yes, this is, I do, um, I do have a copy of that letter. I, I think that, you know, they're well aware of the fact that, um, by the time spring comes, they may not have all the drainage implemented, so that was just kind of a heads up. I took it to be reassurance that, you know, please don't any, everybody freak out because we're not there yet, and if they have in fact, you know, taken the natural drainage away, then there's got to be mitigation for this construction phase, and Mike, um, you know, Mr. Vignelli is the town's engineer, so he's representing your interests and ours, so he'll be.
We've actually already talked to him about that.
Oh, are they, Mike, okay.
A few weeks ago, we talked about the fact that, you're exactly right, with that, the day that the hall road is from the, from the front to the back, goes right across to that swale, with naturally the drainage.
Yeah, we don't know much about that property, but.
Yeah, you're right, though.
I've heard about David Hall having water problems, washing out his driveway, so I didn't know, did they pre-plan for this and put a compliment on that, or just in case?
The answer is.
When you see that video, you'll understand why I bring this up.
I know, and that's, and that's, when I, you know, one of my, my responsibilities for the planning board is just to oversee, not oversee, but to monitor the construction, make sure it's being done right, and now, one of the things I noticed was that, that road was put in, there was no culvert there. So, if the pond does overflow, what's going to happen, it's going to make a big pond right there, it's going to flood back onto the, uh, the properties at the end of Allen Avenue.
Allen Avenue.
Yeah, Allen Avenue, where it didn't, it's going to make that flooding worse. It, it won't flood as bad downstream, because there's a road there now, but, uh, but the, they've been, they've been put on notice in writing that prior to the spring, they need to make sure that the flow is maintained through there, so they don't, they don't impact other private properties. So, they, they're aware of this, they've talked about their construction meetings, and I have a, basically a doc, a document that I've provided to the design team into the town that says they have to watch out for that, so. So, when the springtime comes, right now, it's not too big of an issue, but there's a big rain coming in the spring, they know they have to put a culvert and they maintain that flow, so they're aware of that.
Okay. Well, I wasn't sure, because I asked a couple of the neighbors if they received the letter as well, and, and, we might have been dealing with it, received it.
I don't think they sent letters to the town, so.
I don't know if it was the immediate butters to the project, I don't know, but I was just copying them via email, just a heads up, so.
Okay, does, does anyone else in the public have a comment? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I'm on Fairgrounds Road. Um, did you just say they're going to have to put a culvert under the road?
Mm-hmm.
So, is that going to increase the amount of water coming into my backyard?
No, this is the road we're talking about, this driveway, this driveway that.
So, where's that water, where's the culvert?
The, 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 I was going to plan for a culvert underneath that road, so any water that does overflow from the pond, keep it under there and continue downstream, there's the.
Into my backyard. You cannot divert water into my backyard, is what everyone keeps telling me.
It's maintaining flow patterns the way they are now, that's what that does.
The flow pattern now is nothing.
I understand.
Maybe a triple, an inch wide in the bottom of that swale, and that's something that no one wants to hear.
We.
It was not until Blackie had his people up there in his fields starting construction, that was the first time there was significant water in that swale.
And we are going to pursue this.
What are you going to do to solve it?
Like.
So, I do not have water coming in my backyard.
We do not have an answer at this point.
So, everything's going to proceed, and they can do what they want.
No.
And so, I get legal counsel when they flood my backyard.
It, I don't think, number one, it's going to happen. We are looking at what we can do to resolve it, but it's not going to happen overnight. We, we're getting facts from you, we're getting facts from the engineer, uh, the, the town planner is going back through things, and we are monitoring it. Uh, I live in the area too. Uh, my property isn't affected by this, but, but, but I know, I know the patents and, and some of the other neighbors, and, um, myself personally, I'm going to get with the town planner, and I want to do, uh, because I was not able to make the walk around back in November and December, I want to maybe, Donna, can I get with you and kind of coordinate a group of people where we can get back together, and anybody on the planning board that would like to join myself and the town planner to have another sit-down, uh, just to, to get some of these facts, and for myself to walk, and again, some of these areas you're talking about on the field, I'll watch the video, and maybe one day next week, we can go ahead and get together, and, uh, you know, you can actually show me, I, I see where we have it on here, but, you know, for me to actually go out and take a look at it. Would anyone else like to be on the alert list?
I would.
Okay, Mike, John?
You can put me there, but.
Okay.
Do I close?
Yes, go ahead.
After you see that video, and you see the amount of water that is running down Page Street, you're going to take it away from Page Street and run it through Plymouth Woods into my backyard.
Okay, well, I, I, I don't believe that's going to happen, and.
Where's that water going to go if you take it off Page Street and run it through?
They.
It's that direct line, right to the backyard.
Go ahead, Mike.
Where's it going to go?
The water right now flows down Page Street, goes through Black Yard, Backyard, to Allen Avenue, and then continues down across your property. That's what's occurring right now. Okay, it's been happening for years.
No, it has not.
Well, it, it, it has.
It has been dry.
Is it?
For twenty years.
Well, it's not dry now, because, or you probably wouldn't be here talking about this, but the, uh, there's this flow that, when the pond overflows, the flow goes, goes down, it, it floods Allen Avenue, as we've heard everybody talk about, it flows through the backyard, sorry, it floods Page Street, flows through the backyard of Allen Avenue, and then floods your property, when the pond overflows. Is that, that's what I understand, is that not correct?
No, it did not overflow at all.
Right now, now.
Until two thousand six.
Okay.
And about two thousand five, six, eight, is that it having flooded?
So, what, what Plymouth Woods is doing is, is, uh, is, you know, however that occurred, or whatever happened before two thousand six, Plymouth Woods is not resolving that problem. They're resolving the problem on Allen Avenue, but they're not changing your pattern at all. They're resolving the problems at Allen, they're taking the water that's flowing down Allen Avenue, maybe, it didn't occur before two thousand six, I understand that, and they're basically taking it, instead of going down Allen, Allen Avenue, it's going through a Plymouth Woods site, and going to the same point, which is your property.
And it has shorter distance to travel to get to my property, so it's not going to have as much time to soak into the ground.
Well.
I believe.
Go ahead.
I believe what was happening in pass is the water flow was significant enough, so it would even make it to her property.
Right.
Um, when Rich Gonzales went down and looked at where the water went, he said it just goes out into the woods and it just disappears, it just goes into the ground, it goes to daylight and disappears. So, the flow had been down to a, a point where it never made it downstream.
But you, you do have, you do have flow now coming in, you have no flow on your properties?
I don't right now, no.
Okay. It's a problem.
She tells, this is a springtime lot, this is, you know.
You're talking about, not, not this moment, but when, in the springtime, when the pond overflows, do you have water that flows across your property?
A very minor amount. You can walk across it. Once he started doing that project, I mean, it was way up in my backyard, it overflowed the swale.
Okay. Okay, well, like I say, uh, does anyone else have any other comments?
Just one additional comment. Um, as you can see by those pictures that I presented, because of the driveway and what you're doing, they would have had to take a lot of off of Page Street and put it behind, because the natural flow that they've gone is being disrupted anyway, so it had to be moved.
Okay. All right. Okay, uh, what I'll do is I'll close the public hearing at eight, eight twenty-three? Uh, Mike?
All right, as a white person, I think I can, can I, if I go up there and miss what I'm going to? Because I understand it from all the talking, most people have known this during Plymouth Woods, someone had an advantage to having this area dry, and for some reason, there is more watershed going now this way when they built this swale. Someone had the advantage to build this swale to keep this dry, and brought all of this extra wetlands or drainage area into Page Street.
Yes.
And you weren't having any wet fields, because it was all going into people's basements and spreading out into their driveways.
Right.
And their yards. So, now, what they're going to do with Plymouth Woods is prevent the water from going into your basements and going to your field.
Yes.
So, what they're doing is just continuing the problem that this swale caused.
Yes.
And we have to take care of this and let the natural watershed go where it's supposed to go, because this swale was never supposed to be built.
Thank you.
And so if you're having a problem, you're having a problem.
Thank you.
And they're going to take care of your little bit of problem. It's still going to be there.
And dump it on us.
Yeah, something's not right.
Well, no, but this is a two-step problem.
Something's not right.
That's simple.
Well, one conversation at a time. We don't want to have a lot of...when this development was discussed and approved...
Which one, John? I'm just...
The record.
Mountain View Park?
Mountain, no.
Plymouth Woods.
Plymouth Woods. When all of that drainage and everything was addressed, that it was going to take care of the flooding on Page, there's retention there, but it's a retention pond that is going to break the flow as it comes out of the pond, correct?
Pond, it goes into a grass swale that goes across Plymouth Woods.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, the...
But there's a retention pond there.
Retention pond for the Plymouth Woods development, not for the water coming out of the pond.
Right, right. But with any overflow coming through that swale, that will go into the retention pond at Plymouth Woods, won't it?
No. The Plymouth Woods retention pond is strictly for the site.
Oh, okay.
The water that overflows the pond is going to go through the swale and it's going to continue where it did before.
Okay.
So it's a slightly shorter path, but it's still a grass swale, so...
Okay. Any other questions? John?
Just a suggestion, new pictures. It's likely to be a good idea to put a date on the background and also to make a little explanation as to what it is because I don't know what I'm talking about, but to make sure I saw, there's other ways to look at pictures in terms of what they're thinking and what they're plotting. We've talked about a lot of these pictures.
Okay, I'll try to make it clear on this stuff.
There was a previous package of pictures, a lot of the same pictures, and they were all identified, you know, years and...
We re-presented pictures, so we also added some new pictures, obviously. I'm trying to give a description.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mike.
I don't know what we can do as a planning board at this point, but this, there's a problem here for these people and they have every right to be voicing their concerns and we need to make sure that something gets done. This board needs to do something to remedy this problem that happened in the late 90s. It wasn't in the 80s as far as looking at this information.
We're going to do that because we're also, with the information the patents gave us on Blackie, then at some point, I would like to have a meeting with him. I don't know whether it'd be the work session or it would be down at the town with anybody that wants to do it, or it could be on-site when we do the walk-around, for the work that was being done up in that area to be identifying so that we would know.
That one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, they were, didn't you say they were working up in the woods and doing diversion? So I want to find, and this was in 2006 when...
No, no, late 90s.
All right.
Late 90s. When the cell tower went down, we formed the Plymouth Woods and, like I said, clean this out in the line.
It's a private endeavor.
In case we wanted to use the field for something.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, in other words, if we have private property, we can't make provisions to dry our property and send it someplace else. That's not, I mean, you have to have authorization to do that. You have to have permission and it has to be within guidelines and that's why we have the engineers to look at the runoff and everything. So we need to look at that.
One thing comes to mind that hasn't been discussed here is there's the opportunity to possibly get historical aerial photographs.
I was thinking that too.
That may help pinpoint some of the changes that occurred. I mean, I'd be glad, I'm sure Greg, maybe we can work on trying to come up with some that may help time stamp some of these swales.
I was thinking that too, but I didn't know what was out there or who had, I mean, they're costly.
NRCS.
A long time ago, I had. I haven't done it in about 15 years.
I think what...any other questions?
In response to his comment back a little bit ago, Greg printed these pictures on MapQuest. It kind of shows an aerial view.
So... Dates, different dates.
Well, he just said this was back in November 6.
Oh, so it's current.
I don't know if these pictures were taken, but this will give you some kind of aerial view and this was done on MapQuest.
Thank you.
Bobby, do you have a question?
Do you have the data on the couple shots we're taking?
I don't know when they were taken, but at least it's some kind of aerial photography.
If you Google Plymouth Woods development, you'll find the sum of forms that were submitted to the state. And there's a 1964 aerial photograph, there's a 1980-something aerial photograph, there's a current aerial photograph via satellite. So there are aerial photographs. They're not very good, at least for the ones that are on the internet, but...
Questions. Plymouth Woods, are they aware of this problem?
They are.
They are. I mean, we were... We were aware of the problem when this was all being approved.
You know, concerned about a conflict of interest here where the development is ongoing to Plymouth Woods. And do they have all their final approvals?
They do, but they're totally, I mean, they've purchased the land and it's totally separated out. Unfortunately, the beginning of the problem, and then there's Plymouth Woods, and then there's, you know, Nelson, issues with Mrs. Nelson. Plymouth Woods is right in the middle, but it's, yes, it has an impact, but it's not Blackie's development. That was sold. So I don't understand what you mean by conflict of interest.
Well, I know the property, but I think it can be a conflict here. If there's an ongoing issue here with drainage and the problems that these people are having on, you know, where they live, I would think that we would want to avoid any conflicts of interest between development that's ongoing in the Blackie development.
But the permit was issued for Plymouth, I mean, that was looked at. I mean, it's, there is a problem, but it's not, and I'm not making light of it, but the problem isn't water running through, let's say, for example, Mrs. Nelson's backyard 24/7. There is a problem, the origin of which we're trying to determine, but I mean, that wasn't taken into consideration with the permitting for Plymouth Woods because it wasn't in evidence and it was very generally related, but it's not germane to the actual development.
It was not a situation that they created.
Correct.
But by doing the swale and this other work, the engineers and the other people presented the information that there would be no...
That's what I was concerned about.
There would be no additional flow.
That's what I was...
Now, there was flow, so there is a problem. So that's what we need to develop. It's not being created by Plymouth Woods. I mean, it was...
No, I know that.
It's been created prior to that and I think when this board did the approval on Plymouth Woods, it was ascertained at that time that there would be no additional flow out the end. They would be correcting the Page Street, but whatever existing flow was or wasn't there would not be fixed by what Plymouth Wood did, nor would it be impacted. I mean, there would be...
It's neutral.
Whatever, there would be a neutral flow and a neutral...
Can I have a follow-up question?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Vicnelli and Mr. Patton, he mentioned a proposal, putting a culvert. Does that have any merit for what he was talking about earlier?
No, that's...
To take the drainage from right down through Page Street and...
Eventually it goes to the river.
What's that?
Eventually it gets to the river, so if you can, eventually it does get to the river.
Yes.
If you're flowing down and through here, there's a problem as it's been reported to be, then if you could bypass all that and go straight down to the river, I guess that would eliminate flooding in this area that's a concern.
So that's not feasible or reasonable?
I can't say whether it's feasible or not without looking at, you know, without looking at the arts. First I heard about the concept was tonight and the idea of not having the water flow this way and through here and through people's yards, just have a natural stream here, you know, and then just go straight to the river as possible.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask the board. If it had some merit, maybe a feasibility study by Vicnelli would, I don't know what cost or whatever is here, but if that's going to resolve the problem, maybe we should look into that. I don't know unless we have other...
Well, I think...
These are the things we're going to need.
I think we can task the town planner to put something together there.
Okay.
I know, I would like this back on the work session for next, for March. And like I say, sometime next week, and I can let Sharon know and Sharon can let the planning board know, I would like to take a tour and see exactly what is going on. And then we can set up an appointment with Blackie, whether it be at a meeting or whether it be here at the town. And whoever wants to attend can, so we can come up, you know, with some more information. What I'd like to see in myself, in working with the people in the neighborhood, is to come up with a timeline of, you know, when they moved in, when they started having problems, and come up with a total timeline of when all this stuff started happening, when it continued, when it got worse. Again, we can look at the rainfall situations and see. And, you know, just continue to work on it. But, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say what we have done, it doesn't look like anything's been accomplished here, but we have in fact ruled out, we've assigned dates and times to the different issues with Mike's report.
Yeah.
I think we were all hoping, and Mike included, that there would be a very clear, concise, definitive aha, and there isn't, except for the fact that that swale is looking a little bit guilty. And I mean, this is the process.
But again...
We all wanted it to be an instantaneous solution, but it's not.
And it's not going to be, but I want to assure everybody, it will be resolved. Okay? And that is our goal. We don't want to, you know, put any additional burden on anybody. We don't want, you know, anybody's property to be impacted in any way. And that's the goal of this board. And so I would say we'll continue, we'll cut off this public hearing and go on with the, continue on with the planning board meeting. And like I say, Greg, if I can get with you guys and set up something that's convenient for you next week, come to look and see what your schedule is, maybe two hours, because like I say, I wasn't available. And I'm going to go take a look at some of it, you know, on my own with my wife guiding me through the area, but then I'd like to meet with you guys and, you know, then I'd like us to be able to put all the information together that we have and put it in a timeline format, who said this, who said that. And I was not aware of the work being done up there, you know, to divert all this down. So there's a question that needs to be answered. What work was done? Who authorized it? I mean, again, just because you have a piece of property that has water on it, you are not allowed to drain that on your neighbor's property. And so this, you know, we just need to come to grips and, you know, it might be another month, it might be another two months, but I want everybody to know that, you know, we're going to resolve the issue. But it's, it didn't happen overnight and it's not going to get clarified, but, you know, we want those that are held, you know, those that are responsible to take remedy to solve the problem. And, John?
I always thought that the piece of property that Plymouth Woods was, was half of the Blackie property.
It was.
And somebody just said, didn't somebody say that that wasn't so?
No. It is not now. It has been sold. It has been sold and that section was approved based on the engineers, the site plans and everything, that it was not going to have any additional flow impact. And that's what we were looking at. To solve a problem that's out there, it was going to solve a problem for Page Street, but maybe not necessarily down. But that's what we want to resolve.
Then the other thing I hit, so I remember, is that whole section where Plymouth Woods was, well, there was a section that was supposed to be some type of an area for the water to flow down there, and I'm not using the correct word, but it was supposed to be left as wooded area, so the water would flow down in there and then all of a sudden Plymouth Woods bought at least part of that and was developing it. I'd like to be able to, along with your history track, go back in and see what some of the conversation was, hopefully at the meeting, some of the conversation that said that we will have the Blackie, for better or worse, Blackie property, and how that plan was to have this water divert down our pond into this large wooded area. And I don't know if that wooded area is affected by the Plymouth Woods.
Well, so...
Because if it was and buildings are being built there and trees are being taken down there, that would be a big effect on the water flow.
Well, I mean...
It was supposed to be wooded and I'm not too sure whether that...
Well, there are going to be 20-some-odd homes back in that area, so it wasn't going to be wooded.
There are certain...
That was already approved and there's still a green belt area, there's still a swale area that's in there. And there, yeah, there are still trees there, but there were going to be 19 or 20 homes in there and other roads in there that had already been approved.
Yeah, I have the tax map that shows the legal subdivision, nothing to be filled, so you can see that it was going to be hugely dense.
Okay.
Oh, except for this stuff.
That brings us back to...
What I would, what I would like to do if I could, Mr. Chairman, is go to number nine, just to see if there's any more additional comment, and then we can pick up those two.
Be good. Did you generate a lot of conversation?
Yeah, okay. Excuse me? Okay. What I'd like to do at this point is open the discussion once again for any public comments, which we normally do at the end of the meeting, in case there's something else. I closed the open, the public hearing, but did you have another further comment?
Very quick question. Does this ongoing investigation have any impact on the extension of the Blackies that asked for for their...
It's certainly going to be taken into consideration, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, we're not...
This is...
Public... No, I mean, yeah.
I mean, it has to, it has to be, it has to be taken care of. And with what we're doing and we end up solving it, there cannot be any additional impact based on that. Mr. Patton?
One more public comment here. I have a, drug-related number returned, 2005 by SCA Consulting.
John? We've got some public...
Number four, number five, number five in particular, similarly, there is an increase of storm flow from a large pool, a large pond, excuse me, the discharge is through a 300-foot close system. The discharge point of the system is outside of the right-of-way on Page Street. The pre-development discharge through each six hour, depending on what it is, is 2.92 CFS as compared to a discharge of 5.10 CFS through the pond with 13P. Permission on the downstream property or to agreement or easement is recommended. Whatever granted easements, so permissions.
Do we have copies?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. What's the document, Donna? I heard what it said, but I didn't know what it was. Oh, that's, yeah, that's way back, 2005, yeah. That's the old engineering form, so...
But that's still valid, isn't it?
Do we have copies of that?
I don't know. I mean, buried somewhere. I'll get this all back to you, promise.
So take an inventory.
Trust me, I will.
Take an inventory of what you gave us so you get it back.
I don't want more paper, but I'll take it and I won't lose it.
Okay. All right. So any more public comment? Okay, well, Mike, appreciate your time. Thank you for your help and for your clarification. Thank you for everything you've done and you got as much conclusive information to us as you could because again, it's he said, they said, and, you know... Yeah.
John, John?
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to take the chairmanship back, if that's all right.
There you go.
It is very hot in here. We're going to try and move as quick as we can. We are on, let's see, item number six, Board of Selectmen. Do we, anything for Mr. Lewis?
Just real quick, did report to the Board of Selectmen at their last meeting of the public hearing on the zoning change on student housing, so that will obviously be postponed to the votes.
Okay. Conservation Commission, Mr. Wilson?
Nothing to report.
Zoning Board of Adjustment?
They did not need this much.
Water and Sewer, Ms. Bishop? Kimmichwasser River Local Advisory, Mr. Kelly? Great Plymouth Regional Emergency, Mr. Och?
Nothing to report.
Town Planner?
Speaking of water, I emailed everyone, there is a watershed conference at PSU in March. It's in your emails. I believe it's free at this point from what I can tell. It's all day. If you've got the time, I would suggest that anyone go because we need to start educating ourselves about water and that leads into master plan. Everybody's got a copy, right, of the existing master plan? And our homework is to just go through individually and see what you think has been accomplished in that milestone checklist that's in there. It runs quite a few pages in the back of the master plan.
When did you send the email? This afternoon? Make this happen?
No, this week.
What's with the meeting? What's for the middle?
The watershed? Yeah. I forwarded it, I forwarded...
Yeah, I think it was, I think we got it about ten days ago, last week or something.
Was it last week?
Last year, history. You're joking me about?
I will resend it, how's that? I'll resend it electronically.
Item, item number seven, new business. Okay, that brings us to item number ten. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, second. All right, all those in favor?